Can hear me, let me start out with the introduction, if you will. Laguna Beach Republicans are pleased to present this Laguna Beach Unified School District candidate forum. Three of the four candidates running for two seats on the board have agreed to participate. And tonight we will hear from Amy Kramer, Sheri Morgan, and incumbent Jan Vickers. I'd like to start out by saying thank you to each of the candidates for giving the public the opportunity to hear directly from them on important issues facing our school district. Kelly Osborne had a previous commitment could not make tonight's forum. There is no limit to the number of participants who may be invited to hear this call. However, it will not be practical to open up the questions from the attendees. I have two questions which were submitted to me as requested in by my announcement in advance. And I'll attempt to ask them in the hour we have for this meeting. So, the ground rules, as you probably have read, are as follows. Each candidate will be given up to three minutes without interruption for opening statements. Don't have to take all three, but you're given up to three. Four questions will be given, four questions will cover the below topics. Reopening in a pandemic response strategy, evaluation of the performance of the superintendent, board bylaws and governance, transparency by the board. I'll ask one question on each of the topics directed at each candidate who will allow up to two minutes to respond. All candidates will respond to the same questions. Any candidate may rebut the answer of another candidate or reply to another candidate opening remarks with a strict timeline of one minute. Candidates will indicate they want to respond by waving their hand so that I know to call upon them. Jan Vickers as the incumbent will be asked the first question in every category. All other candidates will be asked to respond to the question with this difference. Each will be asked to answer the question by telling us what they would do differently and what they would do the same as Ms. Vickers and why. Time permitting, each candidate may make a closing statement of up to one minute. If the technology cooperates, this form will be recorded and made available on YouTube as soon as practical. And I'd like to maybe just give a little flavor for this by saying that that Jan's going to be going first and and the questions for the other candidates, keep this in mind that we're all aware that it's easy to criticize those who hold office. Now, if you are a non-incumbent with no record as a board member, the question we'd like answered is, why should voters believe you could or would do better? In what specific ways would you have acted the same or differently than the board acted on each of the matters about which Jan Vickers will have answered for her record? So with that as background, I'd like to proceed with the first question. Anybody have any questions before I start that? Yes, the first question is an opening statement by each of the candidates and we'll start with Jan. We're trying to undo that.
Okay, got it? Okay, I got a little message on the screen that said the host needed to unmute me, so I get now you took care of that, thank you. That's just trying to get a little more light in this room that I have to use, but I will, you ready for me to start?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Jan Vickers, a resident since nineteen sixty-four. I'm a UCI graduate in studio art and humanities. I have three teaching credentials, a secondary, elementary, and an early childhood specialist. I've taught adult ed art for Laguna Beach School District, private art classes. I exhibited in the festival in the sawdust. And I was a director at Laguna School for Young Children next door to Elisa Elementary. And we provided childcare up through third grade, serving many of the staff at Elisa Elementary. I'm a biological foster and adoptive parent. I have two LBUSD graduates, sons twenty nineteen eighty-eight and twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-ten, and they are both college graduates. LBUSD is a successful educational experience, highly ranked with a school profile that details rigor and challenging course offerings. Yes, I have served for years, but supported many initiatives that foster continuous improvement, growth, and change when change is productive. I am a life such as for CLE classrooms. I'm a lifelong learner, one of the most important strengths we impart to our graduates. LBUSD is a district families move here to be part of knowing our graduates are accepted at colleges and universities across the country and abroad. We have an exceptional extracurricular program in athletics and in arts and drama programs. Our special education services are exceptional, also a choice district. Our continually expanding English learner programs support the families of those students along with the students. I, like the other candidates, have been involved in many school committees and PTAs as my two sons went through school. Community volunteer for decades with the Green Belt Canyon Conservancy, food pantry, Meals on Wheels, Scouts, youth sports as a ref. I was a high school JV soccer coach long before I was ever a board member. And the first years of school power, we had, I was involved in that, we had the Pickle Family Circus as our first fundraiser. And I worked with Dave Carter before he was a judge establishing the Laguna Beach ten K Classic. I am known for my preparation, my attendance, thoughtful questions, working collaboratively, totally understanding board governance is being part of five where each has a voice, but decisions are by majority support. My dedication to fiscal stewardship has directly impacted our current strong financial status. LBUSD exudes transparency with monthly budget reports at public board meetings. A yearly audit, the auditor spends a year in a week in the district each year and is presented in a public board meeting. Strong reserves as a community-funded district allow us to finance capital improvements and major maintenance. The budget process is open and the detail-
And we have, we ran out of time here, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I timed it and I thought I was going to get through that, thank you.
Close, okay, Amy?
Thank you, thank you so much for hosting this this evening, I really appreciate it. My name is Amy Kramer and I am a parent, I have three children. All three have gone to top of the world and the older two finished at Thurston and went through to Laguna Beach High School. They are now at UCLA, one just since graduated. And I still have skin in the game with an eighth grader at Thurston Middle School. I am a twenty-five-year resident of Laguna Beach as well. And I have served on PTA doing public relations and marketing and newsletters, I worked in the classroom. I have basically, you know, been involved in all kinds of fundraisers and those sorts of things. I was a very active participant in school power, raising a lot of money for the four district schools. I was public relations chair, I did dinner dance co-chair three times and I was vice president and president as well. And I'm very passionate about education in the community. And I'm super passionate about giving a voice to our stakeholders in the community, especially the district community. And I'm referring mostly to parents, students, teachers, and staff. And I want them to have a seat at the table to know that they have a part in the decision-making process. Their views are diverse and they have different perspectives. And I believe that involving them more in the decision-making process really helps to round out and provide better decision-making, especially for the big decisions that we do have to make for our school board and our school community. Again, excellence in education is really important to me as it is with other families. I helped a group of parents, we worked together on the honors grade waiting program and wanted to get that reinstalled because it's important for our students. And I've seen this through going, having two kids go through high school. It's important for our students to have every opportunity available to them and every tool to succeed. And I just, I'm very passionate about that as well. I have done a lot of volunteer work in the community. I've served on different committees, I've helped city council members in their campaigns. And for example, I worked with city council members on the No on KK major. And we were super successful with that. So my efforts are to always focus on the main goal that we have and to collaborate and, and you know, basically find the best solutions for everybody. So, that's it for now.
Thank you very much. Sheri?
Hi, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, thank you so much for this opportunity to be here and present ourselves. I am a twenty-seven-year Laguna Beach resident and I've been in the Laguna Beach schools for over seventeen years. I bring a lot of experience and knowledge to the table as a school board candidate. Some of the highlights of my experience are the seventeen years that I've been in the district. I've participated and attended in over forty board meetings from speaking in front of the board to their study sessions. This has occurred over the last ten years. I've been an invited member of the district LCAP, the Social Emotional Parent Committee, the curriculum study session, two principal hiring committees, and the superintendent's search, which offered a lot of community input prior to them actually doing the interview. I was a TOW elected representative for LCAP. I ran the book swap at TOW in Thurston for over seven years to help support the love of reading and swapped over forty thousand books with our schools and external organizations. At the high school, I've been part of the student grant committee as well as participating in our kids' sports. I've been the founding member of Sports Swap and a committee chair for seven years. I was an advocacy chair at TOW and Thurston for over three years. And then lastly, like many, I've spent countless hours inside of every classroom that are, all four of our kids have taken and as well as the two kids through Thurston and the high school and the two that I have there now. We have four kids, two have gone through the high school and onto college as well as the elementary schools. Outside of the district, I've been part of the meal team at the Friendship Shelter once a month for seven years. Team mom of many sports teams, girl scout leader for five, and business owner for twenty. I bring a lot, a broad view of experience in the inner workings of our district, a deep understanding of the importance of the relationships between the community and our schools. And finally, a firsthand experience of what it takes to bring that kid all the way from elementary school through high school and into college, tech school, or a community college, depending on what their path brings. I've attended almost every PTA meeting in all of my kids' schools, coffee breaks and parent education series that Coffee Break has offered over the seventeen years because I believe that being an informed parent on the issues that kids face today is something that's, that we need to stay on top of and parent education is something I take very seriously. I believe that education is the one place where our community can come together from all sides to bring forth the best education for our students. As a longtime fan of our district, we've been very happy with the quality of education and the opportunities that LBUSD offers. The last couple of years is where the concerns and patterns of behavior that have caught, that have brought, caught my attention and brought me here today. The increased volume of the parents expressing their concern should say a lot. We know that people won't make the effort if they're really happy, right? They've got better things to do. We know that if there's this much dissent amongst the families and even some going and leaving our district, that our schools are no longer serving our community. This disappointment and frustration I hear from the community is what's encouraged me to run, to bring a voice to these families. After ten years in front of the school board, I knew it was time to get off the front lines and be the voice for change.
Thank you very much, now we're going to proceed to the questions. So, the first question is, as all the questions will be for Jan as the incumbent, and concerning the reopening and pandemic response strategy. And first, you know, some timeline. On February twenty-sixth, the Centers for Disease Control declared local community spread was coming when, not if, and called for local safety measures. March first, school board sponsored dozens of students in Patriot State Parade. Only Dee Perry commented on the lack of social distancing, exposing the teachers, parents, and staff next day in school. March eleventh, school board adopted a policy of no action until directed by state county despite strict closings in state and nationally. On March twelfth, despite no action policy, board president superintendent took action adopting the local state policy delaying safety measures until the first student or teacher was infected or the case is concerned, confirmed. Then a sudden reversal on March thirteenth, emergency meeting, every decision since February twenty-sixth was reversed and there was an unplanned school closures. So the question, why did the board mimic statewide no action policy instead of using local control powers and funding to trot our own course starting on February twenty-sixth? And that's for Jan.
That's your question? I think that your timeline gives evidence of the fact of how quickly this changed. And the board was addressing it, the board did address the rising concern. As you can see what happened within that one week from saying that we were following the local Orange County Public Health Guidelines to having the emergency meeting on the thirteenth to close the schools. And at that time, we closed the schools for what would be four weeks in anticipation that, that we would see if we can come back after four weeks, three weeks of closing classes, which was dramatic to close. And there was a lot of objection to that, to, without having staff or students having become ill in our district. That was local control, that was local control to decide to close in spite of the fact that there was no local evidence in our schools among our students or staff. And then we had the spring vacation following those three weeks. And so we anticipated that after those four weeks, we could come back. And as you know, things just progressed from that point on. It's, I feel that the district was as cautiously optimistic to take that dramatic step and to shut down schools and all that implied in the middle of the spring semester. As a, we are being cautiously optimistic now to open following the health guidelines and the concerns of what we see are the surges across the country when schools reopen and trying to protect our students and our staff. And also trying to make it so that we don't open school, return to school, and then need to shut down again. It's a very dynamic moving situation that we're dealing with. It is so highly unusual. And it's, I think that we have done, we have been responsive and we have used local control. We also are under state guidelines. You have to balance those true and I know that our superintendent has been in numerous meetings in springtime all through the summer, hours and hours each day and getting different information at the federal level, the state level, and the local Orange County level.
Thank you, Jan.
You're welcome.
So, if we would go to that same question, I can read all the situation beforehand again, if you'd like, or you can answer the question again, knowing full well that it's easier to not be the incumbent when you answer a question than it is to actually be one. So with, with, with that, I don't want to prejudice it either way. But what would you have done differently? What would you do the same? Amy?
Well, first of all, I, this is a fluid, no, this is a very fluid situation. I, I do agree with Ms. Vickers that even in the district where I'm working, I work as a parent educator with special education students. And we didn't know what was happening from day to day, everything kept changing. And I, I understand that this pandemic has created a lot of chaos and a lot of ambiguity. And, you know, some people have, you know, a great amount of fear, so I understand all of that. I think that certainly there was a fair amount of trepidation. And, you know, we were right to close the schools, obviously, when we did in the very beginning. And I think that it, it's one of those things where you kind of just have to go day by day. However, I think that considering that we went from, you know, March to June and we were still closed, I would have liked to have seen a little more preparation with some understanding that because it was a pandemic, because there was so much we didn't understand, that we should be getting our, you know, boots to the ground and ready to go for the next fall with remote learning and perhaps, you know, beefing that up and more training. We did the surveys with getting people back into the classroom and it seemed like a lot of parents and students really wanted to get back into school. And I, I understand that that's why the trimester cohorting thing was created. I don't agree with the trimester model. I feel like it created even more chaos in a very chaotic situation as far as children's education and the accelerated timeframes for learning things in a short amount of time. I, that part is standing aside. I, I would have liked to have seen us apply for the waivers, especially for elementary, when we have the opportunity right at the beginning.
End of time, but.
Okay, okay.
I, I know that's a, sounds harsh, but otherwise we'll be here till about eleven o'clock.
I understand, no problem.
So thank you very much, and Sheri?
Hi, thank you. I, I think that our district did an outstanding job of getting our schools turned around and pivoting and ready to do distance learning. We had all of our kids back in school by Wednesday after spring break with computers and technology. And that certainly is a kudos to our technology department and all the work that they've done over the last several years to, to beef up our infrastructure and to provide technology to the kids. I am, I would have done things quite a bit differently, I think. I think the spring was a, was a challenging time, it was a very difficult time, there were a lot of unknowns. But by May, it was known that this is something that was going to be around for quite a while and that we needed to start making some different solutions so that we could get our kids hopefully back to school and our teachers on board with the plan. I, there was a document that was created June fifteenth called Stronger Together. It came down from the California Department of Education. In that document, it did state different learning models, one of them was the trimester model, but it did not have the two-class option, that is not something that I agree with either or that I support. I think that there has been a lot of examples of other districts that have put in place something that is similar to the classes that they have now, whether it's a block schedule or the elementary schools being in trimesters. I would like to see us having a plan that has full video in the classrooms that is allowing the teachers to be synchronous all, all of the time when the kids go back to school or if they don't. So that if we do have an opportunity to bring kids in, we could bring them in even in groups of ten and, or twenty and at different classrooms. And those kids could be in the classroom learning while the kids at home are following along. Right now, the plan has our teachers teaching the same material twice in a week if we do go back to school, which further degrades the quality of education. And I don't think that's what we want to do for our district.
Okay. Are there any follow-ups from either, any of you to each other? Or rebuttals for that matter? Okay. The next question involves the performance of the superintendent. So again, some, some timelines. On October nineteenth, twenty seventeen, the Superior Court of California ruled, quote, "The court finds Jason Valoria as superintendent abused discretion in suspending student and had no statutory authority to suspend the student is ordered to cease punishing the student." Now, this is in the Student Doe versus LBUSD Jason Valoria Superintendent, that can give you the case number and all that stuff. On February third, three judges on the Court of Appeals of California rejected Laguna Beach Unified School District's appeal of the twenty-seventeen judgment against, against Jason Valoria for violating student rights under California Education Code four eight nine one. Now, this was a civil case, but superintendent intervened personally and exercise of disciplinary found, power found illegal under state law. So the question is, if the alleged student misconduct is serious, doesn't that mean more than ever that the board of super, the board and superintendent must not mishandle disciplinary actions leading to court rulings against the Laguna Beach Unified School District? And part two of this question is simply this. After all these rulings, and this maybe cuts to the meat of the matter, the board voted to raise the salary and extend the contract of the superintendent. Why should voters reward anyone who's currently on the board or someone who's going to be on the board with the election for enabling serious unlawful abuse of power by our superintendent? Jan?
Ready for me to?
Yes.
Details of a lawsuit that cannot be discussed publicly. And I, I'm sure you're aware of that, the things that you have stated are public information. As far as the superintendent's evaluation, which this question has to do, it said in the interview that this would be evaluation superintendent. So I can go through the process of what that is. And the process is done collaboratively with the board and the superintendent. And the timelines for contract are laid out in the contract for obligations for setting the goal.
I guess what the real question is, is let me just clarify, so my apologies. What we're really asking is, what was it that, that you, made you decide that he needed to have a raise and his contract extended? What, what was about his performance that you thought?
I can't discuss what we discuss in a confidential meeting as we evaluate the superintendent. Just as he would not discuss with us as he evaluates site principals, what he discusses in those meetings with them. They establish goals with him, just as the five board members establish goals with the superintendent. And those are what his performance is evaluated on. That's what I was trying.
I'm sorry, but go ahead and tell us what those goals were.
I would have to go right now and look those up because there are, there are in performance areas, they have to do with academics, they have to do with staffing, hiring the best staff, they have to do with facilities, they have to do with fiscal solvency, and they have to do with board superintendent relationships. And we establish those collaboratively because as five, he has basically five employers. And so we need to work together to set up the goals that we all agree upon. And then we receive updates on the progress toward those goals during the school year, ending with a final evaluation in June, which all board members participate in. But that's all confidential, under personnel confidentiality. We meet with him and we go over the, what was accomplished under those goals. Then we meet just the five of us and we discuss it and do the evaluation. And then the evaluation is presented to him as a one uniform document.
Evaluation in public document?
Pardon me?
Is the evaluation a public document?
No, it is not. It's in a personnel file, the same as an evaluation for every staff member and every employee we have in the district. Those personnel evaluations are confidential.
So, in, in, looking, just to let you know, we did give you some time back as I asked the question. Looking, looking back on it, so how would the public know what the standards are for evaluating you? We, the public can't know under the way this works.
Even though I can't quote them verbatim for you, I gave you the general categories. And because if he was asked those questions, he did make those, the goals, public. So the public does know the goals on which he is being evaluated. The discussion are not public.
Got it, I, I guess it's, it's something that we can't know as the public is to how, how, what, what there was that was presented to him that says you did such a great job, we're going to give you a raise and extend your contract. That we can't know as a public is what you're saying. I understand if that's, if that's the case.
You're talking about when we meet together and we discuss if we feel that he met those goals during that school year.
Yes.
That does not, that is not public information, that is his, that it goes in his personnel file.
Is there a way to change that in the future?
Well, you're getting into an area that would open the district to lawsuit from employees if we decided to reveal their personal, personnel files.
It was a question worth noting because I'm sure that if you're a member of the public, you're sitting there. But, well, we gave him this review, we gave him this, this money and the why of it, the public is not entitled to know. And I understand what you're saying, you don't want lawsuits. So, I'd like the question now to go to Amy?
Okay. Well, I think, so I participate as a member of the public, obviously, and read about the appeals that continued on with this particular case. I think that the biggest concern that, that many people had, myself as well, is, is the amount of money that was dedicated to fighting these appeals. And the concern that perhaps there was some, there were, there were other motivations behind fighting it. And, you know, I think, I think the whole incident frankly was poorly handled. I think it could have been handled in a very different way. Newport Mesa had a very, I wouldn't say it was completely similar, but they had an incident with their students getting involved in the Red Cups scandal. And the way that they handled it was very different. There was no firebomb thrown to instigate the heated debate that went on about this particular case. There was information, you know, that was leaked out or actually that was, that was given that wasn't true about the case. Because if you read the files, you would see exactly what was involved. And it just concerns me that it wasn't handled appropriately. I really believe that when situations like this arise, there is a way to handle it so that a lot of people can participate in a conversation and we can find common ground, we can find healing, we can find mercy, we can find agreement. You know. You know, uh, like I said, Newport Mesa created this human relations task force and, um, they, they brought the community in to work towards the greater good. And I, I really wish that that had been something that we had done. And as I mentioned, it was the, it was the money that kept being pushed towards the lawyers to, to press on with this case and the appeal after.
Thank you very much. And we, we need to move on to Sheri. Uh, I'll have them, hang on, I'll unmute you.
Sorry, I think I did that. Sorry. So thank you. I think this is a two-part question, so I'm hoping I can answer it in two separate instances. Um, I would, I agree with Amy in the handling of this situation. I think that it was very poorly handled. Um, as a parent of an athlete that was on, um, both the basketball team and the baseball team during that time. Um, I think our experience was quite a bit different. Um, I, I have a strong belief that if we have students in our district that are athletes, what, what I think the community fails to recall is that those same athletes that are at the high school were athletes that used to be at Riddle Field. And so we have, while our students are not students, according to education, after three o'clock in the afternoon, social media has really small shrunk that, that timeframe and made it so that our students are really on all the time. I mean, social media, that's what it does. I think that, um, the district did not have a place to get involved for, from it, um, judiciously. However, I do believe that this, the district could have gotten more involved with it from, as Amy described, as from a healing perspective. Um, you know, this was a difficult situation. The teams would go into gyms afterwards and, and say, oh, that's that racist team. And that's not how it is. And I think that it's, it's, um, the need to have put in place a program was the perfect opportunity where we could have brought the students together. It doesn't have to be agreed on by both sides, but if the, we have students that are involved in an incident, they should be able to have a choice of a restorative justice program, um, if the infraction allows or suspension, or I would even like to see a little bit more of a tiered way to have, uh, discipline so that it doesn't mark a student's record, but it allows them a way to grow through the process. It gives them something that they can draw on as they, as they go out into the world. Our job as a district is to create global citizens. And I think we really missed the opportunity on that one and created a very divisive situation in our community, a lot of anger, a lot of hate amongst friend groups.
Move along though, but thank you.
So I think the district handled it poorly in, in that respect. The, the financial side of it or the superintendent review, I can rebut on with, um, from Mrs. Vickers.
Okay.
Emile, does this opportunity to comment?
Yes.
Um, it's, it's interesting to me that this, uh, question about superintendent evaluation, and I would, I assume this is a process that's involved and how that takes place seems to devolve into this one issue which covers multiple years. But I would say that, uh, the appeal, the appellate judges ruled using a law that was not in place at the time of the incident. At that time, uh, we chose to not pursue it because it, but I need to make it clear that the, that the district was the party that was sued. We did not initiate the lawsuit and that's, uh, the district is sued, school districts are sued regularly. And I would say that the majority of school districts do defend themselves. Thank you.
Okay. I have a phone here that's ringing. Okay. Uh, yes, true.
So I'd like to, um, on the superintendent evaluation, I would like to, um, comment that the superintendent is, yes, he's an employee of the district, but he is the highest employee in our district below the board, right? The board is oversight, um, and the superintendent. And currently, the board has given the superintendent total power uh, through Resolution twenty dash oh three that they did, that they put in place in March. Since then, the about, the superintendent has had three, he's had two evaluations. One was in March on March fourth, the other two were September, June twenty fifth and September eleventh. All three of these superintendent reviews has been be listed as a special meeting. Special meetings, according to the Brown Act, only require a twenty-four hour notice. This is a position that is extremely important. We are a basic aid district. We, our tax dollars go towards funding the district. Our superintendent has gotten a stacked raise to the point where this year he will receive over three hundred thousand dollars as a base salary. So to not have the, the community's input on this, um, evaluation, I think is, is lacking in transparency and it's lacking in fiscal responsibility towards our districts and the constituents.
Thank you. We, we, we have to move along. Are there any other comments about this particular issue? Because it seems to be one that's, uh, uh, got some passion and some emotion behind it.
Emile, I think that Ms. Morgan would find it very difficult to, that have any superintendent come to work for this district if the community weighed in whether, whether they should have their salary increased and weighed in on the evaluation of their performance. It's.
Sheri, you can, you can go answer that and then we need to move along.
It, it's a public meeting and public comment is allowed per the Brown Act.
Yes.
And therefore, if you're having a special meeting that requires the superintendent's evaluation, having it be called a special meeting is not reasonable. It should be something that is already scheduled and is, the public is given the proper seventy-two hour notice so that they can provide public comment on the topic that's on the agenda. When you bury it in the, on the board, on the website, people don't know that it's there. Last week, there were three board meetings. One was the superintendent, one was the anti-racial initiative, and one was the board meeting. The community only got notice of one, and that was the board meeting that talked about going back to school that they were going to talk about again this week. So there needs to be transparency on the superintendent's review. It is, some superintendents are actually elected or nominated. So I do believe that there needs to be a better process of which the community can have input and say on what their tax dollars are funding, which right now is the district. And last year, six hundred thousand dollars towards the superintendent between salaries, bonuses and litigation.
This is, this is the historical issue where you share.
Hang on, Jen. Uh, I just, I enjoy the back and forth. It's, uh, it's very interesting that all of you have such feelings about it. I'm going to give Sheri, uh, excuse me, I'm going to give Amy a chance if she wants to weigh in on this, and then we're going to move along.
Uh, I would have to say that I do agree with Sheri on, uh, providing more notice in regard to the superintendent's evaluation. I think that a lot of times, you know, we're so busy in our lives and we, we get the email that comes in along with a hundred other emails every day. And, um, it just, it seems like a lot of times I hear parents say, oh, I didn't know they were having that meeting, or I didn't know that was coming up. It would be nice to have a little more notice, uh, perhaps, you know, maybe a couple of times, especially for something like that where, um, public comment would be beneficial in a situation like that. I, I, I think that's important that we offer that communication line to our constituents and our, our district community.
Okay. Um, we'll move along to the, uh, the next question. I think some of what we got into here will be in, in the last question. Anyway, uh, board bylaws and governance. Board by one ninety-three ten mandates board policy actions must obey state law and court orders. In twenty seventeen, the Superior Court ordered the board and superintendent to comply in the Student Doe, uh, case. Nope, the lights just went off. The superintendent and board refused citing intent to appeal. Court complies during the appeal, but superintendent and board refused. Court issued an order before the superintendent and board, we held in contempt of court. Board and superintendent violated the law not once, but twice. Yet no board member was excluded from board proceedings and the superintendent was given a salary raise, as I said. So Laguna Beach USD and superintendent lost the appeal on this case. Why should voters reward contempt of the court and selective enforcement of bylaws by re-electing you? And, and to be clear, I'm going to ask a similar question to the other two candidates. Jan?
I don't know how it could be similar when they weren't involved, but, uh,
Well, I'll explain to you. What I'm going to ask them is what would you have done differently since if, if they disagree with you?
So Monday morning quarterbacking. Got it. But, uh, this is going back to a case that's, that's in twenty seventeen. It's three years old. And there's so much positive going on in the district that it seems to me that board bylaws and protocols are put into place so that the board can, can have governance in a reasonable and efficient fashion so that you bring the five people together and agree on how you're going to operate. The bylaws that you're, the bylaw that you're referencing in my understanding was not violated.
I think the court probably disagreed, but I, 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 you know what, since neither one of us is a lawyer, we'll, we'll have to let it, let that one lie that way. Um, I, I guess, um, when we talk about bylaws, I'm going to kind of slip something in here. The, the board changed the bylaws to make sure one, one board member could not be president.
That is not correct. That is not correct.
Yes, it did. But anyway, I don't want to get into you said, I said. So bylaws seem to be flexible with the current board. Let me, let me move on to, uh, Sheri, Amy. Who?
I don't think I was allowed to answer.
You're right, Jen. You should answer the question. Sorry. You, you're right, Jen.
I started to answer the question. And I, after I made the statement that that bylaw was not violated, then you, uh, were adding to the question. The question should be that we work as a governance team with the bylaws in place. They are, they are not something that, that get moved around. They are established with input from all five board members, and then we agree on them. So there are guidelines to work together as a functioning unit. The situation that you refer to with the subcommittee was not a bylaw. It was an establishment of a committee to address a serious issue of confidentiality and putting the district at risk. The subcommittee was never used and the subcommittee had a one-year time period. And it's over and done.
Okay, well, um, Jen, I don't want to cut you off. Did you have more for your answer? You still have a little bit of time.
Well, you didn't seem to want to ask about bylaws and governance in general. It's just such a standard operating procedure. And when new members come on board, I remember when, uh, Ms. Norman and Ms. Perry first came on board, we redid all of those things. We went through all, from our mission statement to our vision to district goals, to district strategic goals. And we also went through all the bylaws and we have, uh, uh, agreement on those so that we can move forward.
Oh, I wouldn't do this, but it's, at some point, I, I think, uh, board member Perry is on the call and, and if, if we go down this path too much, I'll have to ask her to, to comment from her point of view, but right now.
I mean, I was just, we do that for any new board member.
I understand. I, what I'm saying is that, that if we keep going down this path, then my only recourse is going to be have to, to ask someone who was there besides yourself, and that would, would have been Dee Perry. So let me, let me, and we might have to do that anyway. So let me, uh, uh, I think, uh, did we leave off with, uh?
It's Amy's turn.
Amy, yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
What's the question?
That's a, that's a good question. Anyway. It's, uh, it was about the, uh, let me, let me read it back to you because it goes on and on. Board by one ninety-three ten mandates board policy actions uh, must obey state law and court orders. In twenty seventeen, the Superior Court ordered Laguna Beach School District and superintendent to comply in the Student Doe case. The superintendent and board refused citing intent to appeal. The court ordered compliance during the appeal, but superintendent and board refused. Court issued an order to show cause before the superintendent and board would be held in, or the superintendent and board be held in contempt. Board and superintendent violated the bylaw not once, but twice. Yet no board member was excluded from board proceedings. And the superintendent was given a salary raise and cotton candy, coming back to that and contract extension. The Laguna Beach Unified School District and superintendent lost the appeal in that case. So what would you have done different?
Well, it's a great question. Um, first of all, I, I do want to agree with Ms. Vickers that there are a lot of positive things going on right now in our district. We do have an amazing district. I just want to start from that standpoint. Um, however, being a member of the public, once again, um, I believe that we cannot minimize the impact that those actions that the board and superintendent took upon the students that were involved. It was very serious that, you know, I'm, I'm sure the, the board sees it from their point of view. But we're talking about students. We're talking about kids. We're talking about as, uh, you know, the former, uh, principal, Dr. Culverhouse would have said, you know, teenagers whose brains are still forming and they're still trying to figure things out. And I, I just believe that as adults, um, we could have done things a lot differently. And, um, certainly if there is a bylaw saying that if, you know, you lose an appeal, stop now. Um, we didn't do that. It, it, it kept going and certainly I, I don't want to, you know, of course I would have stopped after the first appeal, but I think what I would have done differently, and I know I would have done differently, is I would have started something different at the very beginning. I would have addressed the situation a very different way. And, um, and I, I do believe that I know that the lawsuit, it, it, it was, it was more about protecting stu, the student and in general, students from here on out than it really was about suing the district. Um, I think there's been some confusion and some misleading about that, and it's, again, concerning. Um, but I, I would like to see us, you know, move forward and to, um, consider uh, getting the community together. I know that this, um, anti-racial resolution has been brought forth, and I think that there are some super positive ways to incorporate really good, positive measures into the way that we communicate and handle things.
Amy, we've run out of time. Sheri?
Look, I, I just want to ask a question first. I'm a little confused. Are we going back to the Doe versus L B U S D and the bylaws that are associated with that? Or is this a general statement and question about the bylaws in general and how they're handled?
It's a great question.
Okay. Well, I, I think that I, I hope that I brought some understanding of where my perspective comes from as far as the Doe versus L B U S D. Um, there's a lot of things that could have been handled differently. It should have started at the very beginning. It should have been a learning opportunity, in my opinion. Um, not a litigation, um, race or journey. Um, as far as the board bylaws, I think that there's a lot of concern because, um, the bylaws themselves, I think, are open for some interpretation as far as how it works well for the district is what it appears to me. Um, for example, uh, board bylaw ninety-two hundred limits the board authority. And it states the board is the unit of authority over the district and that board member does not have individual authority. Word shall hold the education of students above any partisan principal group interest or personal interest. Individual board members shall submit requests. And here's another part of that, that individual board members shall submit requests for information to the superintendent. So I, why, so these board bylaws, and one of the things that I'm finding is that there are bylaws that have been changed that create a larger uh, veil of secrecy. Um, why would individual board members have to go to the superintendent for information? Why would they not be able to gain, get their own information or ask questions of administrative staff if they need it? Doesn't the, at three hundred thousand dollars, I think our superintendent has more important things to do than be the administrator of all of the questions that come through and across the district. I have found our administration to be absolutely fantastic. I have never had a problem seeking information from any of them until some of these board policies started to become flexible so that they worked in favor of the superintendent and the, and the district. And this is not, I know I'm not, um, anti-anything. I am pro-transparency, pro-clarity, uh, and pro-understanding. And when we see bylaws that are starting to become flexible, depending on how they suit the needs of those that are implementing them, I think we have a really big problem. And I think it makes me really concerned with what are we hiding? And why is there, why is it so necessary for the cards of the superintendent and the board to be held so close to their chest? There is this an image that we're transparent, but we're not. There's instance after instance after instance where they could have been fully, fully transparent, fully communicating all of the details of something, and that hasn't happened. As far as, um, the, um, policy that brought about some of these lawsuits, there was a, there was a.
We're running out of time.
Okay, sorry.
We're going to probably run into that in the last question, which is transparency.
I would like to speak in the rebut, uh, answer to Ms. Morgan.
You have a minute. Absolutely.
Just quickly and simply, one student in that incident, one family brought a lawsuit against the district regarding student discipline. Uh, a board member, what we set up as, uh, a protocol that will work well is that a board member does ask for information. You can do it uh, by an email. You can do it in a public meeting under our last agenda item. The purpose of doing that, and this goes back to, uh, Teresa Dom as a superintendent and beyond. Then that information is shared with all board members. So it isn't like a one board member asks a question and gets some information, and then others don't get to share in that. That's the purpose of that. Also, the superintendent has the, uh, option to direct the board member to seek the information from a person like Arine White if the question is involving that. So, uh, it is very transparent. I would disagree with you completely on that. The board and superintendent are not hiding anything.
Okay. That brings us to the last question and I, but first I'm told I should ask if there's any rebuttals.
I have one.
One minute.
Uh, board by law ninety-one-twenty-four attorney contact was adopted on March twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Two weeks after that is when the whole situation started with, um, censure and trying to create a special committee. So again, the flexibility of bylaws so that they, so that they adapt to how they need to be used by the superintendent and the board, I think, is a big problem. I think that, um, there are multiple instances where there are, um, lawsuits that do not need to occur if there was an, possibly a better way, two, two-way communication. Um, as far as seeking information, I don't think some of those are to be, um, secretive. I think it's a quick question like, hey, what's the dollar number of this? What's that over there? Because this bylaw makes it seem as though it can be very well, it can be used to be very open and transparent that, hey, it's to share the information with everybody. Or in some instances, such as censure, it has been used to say, but you can't do that because it says you're not allowed to talk to somebody. And, and that's not being consistent and that's not being fair and equitable to all board members, to all community members and to anybody.
We, we do need to move along to the, to the last question. We're, we're, we're getting close here. Uh, transparency by the board, which is kind of like a continuation of the subject. Um, in twenty seventeen, the superintendent, superintendent didn't make any public statements when Superior Court ruled the board and superintendent violated the state education code, abused discretionary powers and violated legal rights of the students, of students and parents. In twenty twenty, the board and superintendent made no public statement about the ruling by three judge appeals court of California that upheld the twenty seventeen Superior Court ruling on abuse of power. In more contrast, when Dee Perry case was dismissed on procedural technicalities without a ruling on the facts or law, the board president made public statements aggressively disparaging Perry as if the Laguna Beach Unified School District won the case on the merits, which it did not. When Laguna, Laguna Beach Unified School District lost the McKnight case, the board and superintendent declared victory because the damages awarded were less than claimed. Question. Isn't it a lack of transferring transparency and communication policy under the bylaws to censor and suppress information about lawsuits that the district loses, but only to then attack citizens who seek court protection of their rights? So Jan?
Question?
Isn't it a lack of transparency and communication policy under the bylaws to censor and suppress information about lawsuits that the district loses, but only to then attack citizens who seek, uh, court protection of their rights?
Any lawsuit that the district is involved in is working with their attorneys. And the attorneys advise what statement should be made to the public so that you don't further ex, expand that lawsuit. Those things need to be handled very carefully. I will say that you're still referring to old case. In fact, the McKnight case was under Superintendent Smith. So I make that really clear. Dr. Valoria was not here then. That was Superintendent Smith. When, um, Ms. Morgan referred to her need to have this information, it is, she has done this historically. She was often asking me about Dr. Smith and her evaluation and wanting details of her evaluation. And again, similar things, why salary increases and why, uh, she was still here. So board members need to be very, very careful. At, at a time when I was not on the board, the, there were some comments made in the paper which ended up in a superintendent at that time was Reed Montgomery. And they were, the, the board needed to pay out of over three hundred thousand dollars for some misstatements that were made in the paper that he said would damage his future career. We have a responsibility to be extremely careful with confidential information. And the censure that Ms. Morgan is referring to did not deal with a bylaw. It was a separate issue that dealt only with attorney-client privilege, confidentiality, and that board members, even when we're off the board, we never are released from the responsibility to keep those confidential matters confidential.
So do we have any rebuttals to that?
I do think you get a chance to answer the question, right?
So in a rebuttal to that, uh, again, board by law nine-one-two-four attorney contact states, this was adopted on March twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Contacting legal counsel at the discretion of the board is at the discretion of the board's president and superintendent or designate may confer with district legal counsel, subject to any limits or parameters established by the board. Two weeks after that, in a board meeting, the district's attorney indicated that they had forwarded a letter marked confidential. But that letter was about the subject that received it. So I think there's, and this was all public comment in the board meeting. So I think to state that there has been total transparency or that, that we need to protect or, um, I, I don't think it's accurate because I think, again, this is an instance where a board bylaw was put in place two weeks prior to an incident that triggered, um, giving isolating one board member from, from everybody else.
Then, then going back to the original question with isn't it a lack of transparency in communication policy under the bylaws to censor and suppress information and lawsuits that the, that the district loses? And then to attack citizens who may have, uh, seek court protection of their rights?
Absolutely. Um, I, I, I think that what's fair for one is fair for the other. I, I believe that uh, certainly, um, nobody wants to admit when they are defeated. Uh, but certainly they like to tout when they have won. However, we are a, you know, democratic school district. We, uh, need to be transparent with everything. And if you're going to do one thing for a, one case, you, I think you should follow suit with the others. Um, I also think that first of all, I, I, I think that maybe they need to look at getting some different lawyers. Because I believe that the lawyer was the one who, uh, suggested the censure, not just the censure, but the, um, the subcommittee. And while the subcommittee was not ever used, it really set a bad tone. Um, it just set a bad tone for the board overall and their inability to work things out. And I, I realize that there are lots of technicalities that could be called up for this, but the reality is the optics were really bad and we, we don't need that in our district.
Yeah. All right. Um, my backup. Um, so the overall question back to Sherry. Isn't it a lack of transparency and communication policy under the bylaws to censor and suppress information about lawsuits that the district loses? And then to attack citizens who seek court protection of their rights?
I think that we've gone around on this one several times. So I, I, I'd like to say that, um, I think that transparency is a big issue in the district. And I think that to tout their horn for one success, but not state, make a comment about a loss um, is not being transparent with our community and the tax dollars that they're spending, um, to defend the district or to, um, ensue a lawsuit. Um, the board policies are not the board policies that are there, again, I think have had a lot of, um, stretching recently to say that, um, that we're totally transparent. We're not. Uh, the Brown Act requires seventy-two hours' notice for regular meetings. There have been, to have a superintendent have special, review these special meetings does not allow the commu, the community to make a statement. I'm not saying we're supposed to evaluate him. I'm saying that we should be able to make statements to the board who are elected to represent us that reflects our desires. And right now, it's very much about the board. You hear a lot of eyes. You hear a lot of, we have done this for this way forever. And we ha, and you hear a lot of, um, complaints about the community rising up to speak for what they want. And that is not, in my mind, the job of the board. The board is oversight and they are there to represent their constituents. And yes, the board is there to work hand in hand with the superintendent, but is not to give the superintendent the full reins of the district and say, run and see how fast he can go. Because, um, that's not what this community deserves. It's not what our children deserve. We need to bring a voice to the children and we need to have these bylaws be more transparent and, and followed by the board, not interpreted by the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I would rebut that because it's, it's, um, some statements from Ms. Morgan are extreme.
Yeah, one minute. Absolutely. Go ahead.
It isn't fair to this district that she focuses totally on lawsuits and the superintendent's evaluation. There are so many other things that could be discussed as far as what boardmanship is about, what it would mean to be a board member, what she wants to bring to the board rather than the continual critique of past lawsuits. It's time to move forward. And I don't see anything positive coming out of the suggestions. I just see this special meeting for years have been the designation for superintendent evaluation meetings. They are not regular board business meetings that are established every year at the December annual organizational meeting. Those are always called special meetings. And I just, I guess I'm really big on self-responsibility. If I want to know when something's going to happen and I call somebody up and ask them if I can't find it, if I have an idea that it's been in Stu News, it's been in the Independent. So, you know, I just, uh, I just think it puts the district in a, in a, in a light that isn't necessary. And I think we need to move forward looking for positives. There are positives.
Thank you, Jan. Um, we don't, we're getting close to the end, but, uh, this, I see hands waving, so, um, Sherry, Amy, and then we'll, we'll, we'll call it a, we'll call it a meeting. Is that okay?
Thank you for this opportunity. I, um, I appreciate the historical reference and the years that, um, member Vickers has brought to the board. I think that the constant referral to we have done things this way for years is concerning. I am a big fan of our district. I have been. I have stood before the board and complimented them on many things that they've done well. The questions that have been asked are what is being answered. I have not brought anything to the table that is negative. I have simply answered the questions. I am stating by word bylaws that are in the bylaws that I believe member Vickers, um, embraced and approved. And, um, I'm not stating anything that's unfactual or that I don't think is necessary for the community to hear. The board is an elected position to represent the community. And that is the job that should come forward, not how well we can do things the way that we've done things for thirty-plus years. It is time for change. It is time for new voices and it is time for us to take this district into the future, not do things as we have always done, because that is part of the disparity in our community right now. Thank you.
Okay, well, uh, if you want to
Emile, is there, is there a rebuttal to that or do you want to go to the closing statement?
I, I, I think I got, I, I owe Amy and then we're going to go to closing statements.
Okay.
So I've kind of said what I need to say about that. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to say anything. I just, I didn't want to cut you off. So, uh, this has been a really spirited discussion. I, I, I really appreciate all, uh, your, your comments. And now we're going to go to, uh, uh, closing comments. You'll have a minute to, uh, uh, tell us why we should vote for you, I guess, is the, is the way I would put it. So Jan, you go first.
Okay, well, I have to start with the, I have to start with the last comments Ms. Morgan made because again, that is highly offensive. I don't use that terminology. I don't say all the time, this is the way we did it. This is the way we did it. I couldn't be an effective board member, and I am an effective board member, if I did that. If something comes up and I have information that is background information, I share that. That has been greatly appreciated with things like the Aliso school site and our ability to repurchase outside information that had been lost. Things that like that, uh, Mr. Dixon often asked me for background information because things are maybe a little nebulous when you go back a number of years. I just said in my last comment, it's time to move forward. And I said in one of my opening statements that I've been involved in continuous improvement and growth and change, change when it's productive. I've always supported that. I, those are not words that I use. I, uh, recent times, there have been words that have been attributed to board members and I think that is not, and other people say to me, that's not language that you use. That is the style with which you speak.
Jan, thank you very much. Uh, your closing statement is, uh,
But I, thank you.
Amy?
So I I really believe that communication is super important to move forward and to create positivity in our district. Um, I am a proponent of, uh, open communication, um, inviting more people, parents, students, teachers and staff to participate in these big decisions. And so it's when we are making big decisions like this that, that a lot of personal feelings come out. And I, I know that the best way to approach those things is by including more voices. And, um, sometimes you have to step outside of the circle and you have to really reach out and, and ask people that don't typically participate or, or bring them into the circle so that they can. Um, a diversity of perspectives, again, is very important to, uh, creating the best solution. Um, I also believe in accountability, obviously, um, and transparency. I think that's very important so that everybody feels like they know what's going on and they have access to information. Uh, and positive leadership is super important because, are you cutting me off?
Yeah.
I was just getting going.
There you are. That said, uh, we're, we're seven minutes old already, but bring us on. Um, I'm sorry. You can't see I'm pointing at you, but yes.
That's okay. So again, I just want to thank you so much for this opportunity. I think that there's a lot of, uh, misconceptions out there of, of who's running, what they stand for and what we're all about. My truck rocker demonstrates, um, who I am, that I seek information, that I seek facts. I ask the hard questions. I'm a voice that's represented many through the years. Um, the current disparity in represented, representation has led me to this place. Um, I'm a nonpartisan voice. Um, those views that I've expressed in front of the board are generally from a place of concern, of congratulations, of, um, a voice of the people. Um, I think that we need to have more town halls. I think we need to have more two-way communications. I think we need to, um, do policy change that allows more transparency, more voice to come to the table. Um, I'm not a politician. Um, I'm an informed, educated, long-time parent in this district that's taken the time to research my facts. And I understand what's facts versus fiction. And it's that clarity and transparency that I plan on bringing to the board. Um, I think we need to bring a voice back to this community and let these voices be heard. So thank you again. Check out my website, boatsherrymorgan2020.com. You want a voice, it's on your choice.
So, uh, I would like to thank you all for participating. It was a spirited discussion. It was a good discussion and, uh, uh, I wish you all the best in the upcoming election. So now you can just, if you wish, you can click off.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Emile.
We'll have a recording available soon. Excellent. That support's working on it.
Great.